Okay, before we call the meeting to order, we have a special public hearing on the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority public hearing on call it to order. Mr. Lightcap?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Ms. Lightcap? Better not hit that.[52.68][52.68](Laughter). My name is Robert Lightcap. I'm a solicitor for Latrobe Industrial Development Authority. The only time you ever see me is when we have a project that we have on tonight. The project is the new dormitory residence hall for Seton Hill University. The estimated cost of it is approximately $11,250,000, of which $9,450,000 is going to be supplied by First Commonwealth Bank. As you know from prior hearings and projects, the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority is a channel by which local businesses or, in this case, exempt facilities, since Seton Hill is a university, can channel capital, expenditures, borrowings for capital expenditures. And by running it through the Industrial Development Authority, the interest on the loan required is exempt from federal taxation, which enables, in this case, Eaton Hill to borrow money at a cheaper rate. This public hearing is a requirement of federal statute known as TEFA, which is the Tax, Equilization, and Fiscal Responsibility Act. I thought I was right. Which requires a public hearing to be held before approval of the project and then after the public hearing, approval of the project by the elected representative of two bodies, one being the body which created the authority, which is you, and the other being the body where geographically the project is located, which is Greensburg. So this public hearing is being held on behalf of both the authority, the City Council of Latrobe, and the City Council of Greensburg. Coincidentally, the City Council of Greensburg is holding their meeting tonight as well as you are. Their meeting starts at 7:00, and there is a resolution to be put to the City Council of Greensburg to approve the project, which is similar to the resolution which will be presented to you during your meeting tonight, to approve the project. The actual project is, as I stated, is a dormitory residence consisting of 144 rooms. With me tonight is Jennifer Lundee, the Chief Financial Officer at Seton Hill, who can answer any questions that you may have. But one question which always comes up is why does Latrobe Industrial Development Authority associate itself with financings of projects in Greensburg? We have a long history of financing projects for Seton Hill, as we do for St. Vincent as well. But the rationale that the authority has is that there are a number of our citizens who are students at Seton Hill, and it's within our area of interest. Seton Hill is comfortable channeling their financings through the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority, and we accept that comfort as well. If any of you have any questions, or any members of the public have any questions, I'm here to answer them, or if I can't answer, I'm sure Jennifer is. Other than that, I have no further statement to make.
Thank you, Mr. Lightcap. Anyone have any questions?
I just have a question of curiosity. Is this an expansion, new dorm, or is it replacing other dorms that already exist?
It's an expansion. We know, if you remember last year, we financed the dining mall project for Seton Hill, and at that time, if you recall, they were saying Seton Hill is making a concerted effort to get more of their students to live on campus, and this is part of that same program.
What percentage of your students do live on campus now, roughly?
I'm not 100% sure. We do have a residency requirement for three years for all students that do not live within 50 miles of the campus.
Okay.
So it really depends on the geography of the students in the class.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Okay.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close the special meeting. And call to order the May 14, 2018 Latrobe City Council meeting, and ask that all to stand and join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask for a moment of silence, and today, in honor of, in memory of our friend Tom Blehatch, who recently passed away. Some of us have been around for a long time. Remember, Mr. Blehatch was the Assistant Executive Director under Harold Dyker at Park and Rec., and then became the Executive Director, and served in that capacity for well over 20 years. It's, you know, at that time, too, that's when Park and Rec. was underneath, under a city council before the commission was formed and all that kind of stuff. So Tom was a great guy, and very committed to Latrobe and the community, and I would just ask for a moment of silence in his memory. Roll call.
Mrs. Weller? Here. Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Murtha?
Here.
Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Mr. Baldieri?
Here.
Mr. Forrest?
Here.
Mayor Wolford?
Here. First, at this time, I want to introduce our solicitor here, Stephanie Blesz, she's sitting in for Zach today, so welcome, and glad to have you here. At this time, I'd ask for approval minutes from the April 9, 2018 meeting.
Madam Mayor, after having reviewed the same, remove that the minutes of the April 9, 2018 meeting, approve that accepted, and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk, where they will be available for reading and inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Madam, a second, please.
I second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have an approval of the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of April 2018?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Murtha. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this time, we have our citizens' request portion of the agenda. These relate to items that are on the agenda, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak or quite more related to the items on the agenda, please go to the microphone and have your say. Nothing? Okay, moving on. Committee reports. Finance committee. We haven't met yet, so. Public safety and fire?
Nothing pending at this time, right, Madam Mayor.
Public Works?
We just met. I'm gonna let Mike speak to just some routine issues that have just ongoing things during this report, but there's nothing new and urgent to report.
Personnel committee, we are, we have a motion here on the agenda that we'll get down to with regards to some of the things that the personnel committee's working on. Anything else, Jack or Jared? Vets committee, Christine? And the showcase, Jack, you want to update us on that?
Yes, our recipient could not make it tonight. She had a banquet for the top percentage of her class to give her the night, so we'll be presenting this at our agenda meeting, which is the 29th?
29th, yeah. It'll be Tuesday.
Right.
May 29th. Thank you. Foreign authority reports. Skip?
Yes, Latrobe Municipal Authority's billing system is, new system is up and running. You can now use your charge card to pay the account, or check online. All you need to do is go to our website, and click on the link, and sign up, and you can do it.
Yeah, you can actually attach, you can actually have a deducted from your checking account, too, because I just did it.
Right.
Yeah, and I, but I, can you explain to me and everyone else, why our bills went up so much?
537 plan.
I mean, I think I know the answer, but I think we need, I know the answer.
537 plan, we had to take out a $10 million bond for the suicide, and that's one of the reasons they went up, is to pay the bond, and we have to do all that work on the 537 plan.
Okay. Thank you. Did you?
Skip, is there a certain timetable on that?
No.
No.
We're still, we haven't even started some of it. I mean, they've got all the planning going, they're still waiting on the DEP.
But our bill won't go down within five years, 10 years, or whatever?
It could. The, on the suicide for citizens of Latrobe, there is an increase. It should be like 650 for the debt service, but it's, I think it's nine and a quarter. That's due to the fact that we weren't allowed to collect it, because we're being sued by Unity Township on the rates, so we couldn't collect it till now. So it went to the 925, and January 1, it'll go back down to the 650.
Skip, if I may ask, in the newspaper a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I thought Unity Township was to approve the 537 plan. I just wondered if there was been any meeting out there, if that's occurred.
Haven't heard nothing. We're in litigation because of the rates, and that's what's causing a lot of problems. We can't collect money from anybody outside Latrobe and use it to what it's supposed to be used for.
Okay.
I think Zach, when he, at the agenda prep, we can talk more about that, because I know Zach's been having discussions with all the little folks.
No, I just saw that they would meet on October 1. Okay, that says all.
Any, anything from the library?
While we met, this discussion, the city's not going to be real happy, but the bookmobile is going to be retired. We're gonna have like a, like a retirement party for the bookmobile in the fall.
Is it just because of financing, or does the bookmobile need replaced?
Well, yeah, it's a finance, it's an expensive thing to keep up, but they're, they're still looking into alternatives, maybe something smaller.
Anything for the department chair? Okay.
Hold up a minute, please.
Department reports. Mike?
Yeah, just a couple things. Just want to let you know that the 2017 CDVG paving was complete today. The intersection of Legionnaire South Center, South Center Street, Legionnaire to Levine, and East First Avenue from Legionnaire to Main Street, it was complete, so everything worked really well, no problems, other than a little rain we had this afternoon, but big difference going across Legionnaire Street, I still hit the brakes, I think the railroad tracks are there, but it's, it's smooth. The other thing, parking garage at the hospital, just to inform everyone, looks like about another day and a half, maximum two days of traffic restrictions or closures on my second. They ran into some problems, it took them a little bit more time than anticipated, but they're, they're working, and they're, they're gonna get their equipment off the road as possible. Last thing is bridge updates. Had a meeting with the Pendot regarding the bridge. They're still on track for mid-June. They're possibly looking to pave it sometime around Memorial Day, but they still can't open it up to two-way traffic. If they opened it up to two-way traffic, they would have to move the Jersey barriers protecting the workers, which, then they can't get work done on the bridge, so they're gonna keep it with the lane restriction that is now, work as, you know, as much as they can, still opening it mid-June.
Bill Coe had to call me today, who's the Assistant Director of Pendot in District 12 that handles this. He was the guy that was here last year, and pretty much echoing what you had said, just wanting to make sure that, I mean, he said, "If you guys are having some big parade or something, you know, we could open it up, but it's just gonna delay the finish, the whole end project." And I said, "No, we have a parade for Memorial Day, but it's, you know, get it done, so that when you open it up, it's days open." So, so, yeah, he was pretty much echoed what you had said, so there is very much end in sight.
Madam Mayor, I might ask, do we have a contingent Plan B if it's not? I mean, in terms of the Fourth of July?
Same thing we did last year. We didn't have it last year, so I would imagine we'd revert back to what happened, what we did last year. And we, we changed the route.
It worked well last year.
And it did work well last year.
It's just gonna go that way this year, no matter what, because of the way it worked.
It worked out, so we're keeping that.
We'll have those permits for making, I mean, you know, two ways.
So we're gonna keep the, the last year's route. See, see, something good came out of it after all.[985.82][985.82](Laughter). Anything else, Mike?
No, that's over.
Chief, what?
Nothing to report, just reiterating the fact that we're dealing with all the construction problems and rerouting, also the things that are going on in town, different celebrations and festivals that we've been needing on some of those, and designing some action plans that are gonna route traffic, so that's what we've been working on, pretty much.
Yeah, I have, if you think about it, I mean, we had the garage going on to get out that way, we had the, the Legionnaire Street over by the railroad tracks. Were people impatient, chief?
For a while, I think, you know, I'm pleasantly surprised over the hospital. I don't think I received one complaint personally, so I was really shocked. I thought we would get longboarded, but apparently they did a good job canvassing before the construction and warning the people, so it hasn't been much of a problem.
Okay, thank you. Chief Brazili?
Just been busy with actually the weather-related calls, as far as high winds, wires, trees, and lots of light, so we've been, we've been kinda saddled pretty hard with that, but we're getting through it, but I don't see any let up here for the next week, so.
I was gonna say, the weather forecast for the next week is 10 days.
It's too much here next week, so we're kinda, we're kinda just batting down our hat to, and waiting to see what's to come next. The, that's company number three, they took care of what she found in the parking garage on Saturday, so that's done, and I don't think we have anything major going on till Memorial Day Parade, and then Company One's street fair will take place, we're setting up the 17th, which is Father's Day, and it will run 18 through 23rd. So it's a little lighter this year than it was last year, so.
Maybe it won't rain?
2040.
You got that, and you, yeah, well, yeah.
It's all raining now.
Thanks, chief. Anne?
I'm never working for the fair.
Okay, on to the agenda items. Stephanie?
Agenda item, I apologize, I have a cold today. Agenda item 10A1 is a resolution entitled, "Approving the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority, Seton Hill University Residence Hall Project," and this authorizes the authority to issue an obligation in the amount of $9,450,000 to finance a new residence hall at Seton Hill University.
Resilience?
Yes.
Okay, may I have? May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion to adopt that resolution, as I am, folks, listening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bartels, may I have a second, please?
I'll say. Second.
Mr. Baldieri, I think I heard you first. Okay. Any questions? Ms. Peton? Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The second item, Agenda item 10A2 is a motion item, and the motion is as follows, "To authorize the solicitors to seek approval from the Court of Common Pleas to have an administrator appointed for the estate of Michael Wada, and to obtain the death certificate for Mr. Wada from the Department of Vital Records in person."
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt this?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
I'll say.
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask for a second. Thank you for the word, but, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's a motion, right? Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then, my final item, Agenda item 10A1B1, is another resolution titled, "Authorizing an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association for Assistance in the Hiring of the Next City of Latrobe Chief of Police at a Cost of $5,000."
And this is a motion?
A resolution.
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 May I have a, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Baldieri. May I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Questions?
Just one question, this, do we need a word to say travel expenses?
Well, it is, yeah, the $5,000, there is additional travel expenses that are part of the contract.
Is that in this, I guess, to Eric's point, is that in the resolution?
I don't know.
Is it necessary? I don't know, I'm asking it.
It's probably not necessary.
I think it's probably not, it's probably.
Because it's probably de minimis.
De minimis.
De minimis.
De minimis, I'm sorry.
De minimis.
De minimis, long term.
Said that three times.
Mr. Kelly, it's term.
What all does the $5,000 entail?
Advertisement, the three chiefs coming in, doing the actual interviewing.
Wait a minute, do they, so they, they write the ad?
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna.
With our help?
Yeah, I'm gonna give them an idea, they're gonna send it back, and we'll pass it through.
Yeah, okay, and then, and then they, then they do the weeding out of the resumes?
Right, they'll narrow it down to whatever number the council, which they have, personal committee, whatever, which they have, and then based on that, they'll do verbal interviews of the, so they narrowed down to 10?
Yeah, they'll, so they'll do the screening process down to as many as we want to interview.
Right, and then they'll interview those 10, and narrow it down again to our, whatever number is required.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So we're all about processing, you know, and there, they'll do, like I said, there's a, the Police Association has their magazine, they advertise through that, and they'll handle it, there's a schedule that I can give you that takes you all the way up to the desired, you know, date for interviews.
Yeah, if you get a copy that way.
I will, you know, I just, I figured at this point, until.
Until we actually go, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the process.
Yeah, I'll send everyone a copy of it. They're in piles, I just wanted to wait until we got the, okay.
Okay, so with the motion, Zach, and any other questions? Ms. Peton?
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller? Yes.
Mayor Wolford? Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I mean, just a suggestion, if, to our closer, for future meetings, maybe it'd be a good idea to put, for example, number one, resolution badge, motion badge, though we don't have to.
Yeah, I usually.
Is it a motion or a resolution?
I usually take closer attention and write it down myself, but that's it.
That way, very simple, just write down what it is before the line.
That's okay, I'm not to worry about that. Any unfinished business?
I forgot to ask, Mike, is there a electronics pickup?
Yeah, good thing you asked, I'm sorry, I didn't, this Saturday, May 19, from 8 till 12, we'll be holding electronic collection of waste at the stadium parking lot down here, Yankee Stadium, open to city residents. It's limited to small quantities of just TVs, computer equipments, monitors, keyboards, that, those type of things, you know, feel free to bring your electronics down and recycle it.
No charge?
No charge.
This Saturday?
This Saturday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other unfinished business?
Yeah, for code enforcement, Anne, that property down there on, I guess I wanna say Avenue D, that one is vacated last year, remember? The guys that lived there, they moved out, and nobody's there now. I could tell you down there, did you try to explain?
Yes, I know, we're gonna talk.
Do we know what's going on with that, or who's, now, who would be in charge of maintaining the grass and stuff right now?
Well, if I can't find the bank or anybody, then we would cut it and build the property.
Okay, that's right.
I'll look at it.
All right, look at it, I mean, if you can find out the bank, I'll pass that along to the neighbors down there, and they wanna call them, get you the bank, they can. It'll take some heat off you, and me.
I also meant, wanted to mention to you, I meant to call you today, Anne, and I'm sure you, you know this, but the corner of Lincoln and Walnut?
Yeah, yeah, they're already on it, yes. Yeah, it's from last year.
Yeah, the one across, the other one, the other one you posted was cut this weekend.
Yeah, she called me.
Did she? And then I talked to her as well, so, okay. Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, when you asked me about the library report, I should've just reminded everyone that the summer reading program is starting up soon, so if you know young kids, you know, take them down there, get them signed up. As usual, a lot of great prizes, the theme is Libraries Rock this year, so.
That's cool.
There's adult prizes, too. Adults can read.
Adults, adults can read.
Yeah, I won a $75 load card, I don't know, last summer and the summer before, so.
Any other unfinished business items? New business? Guys got anything?
Wayne, do you want to mention about the G14 summit?
I was wanting to, under my, yeah, under my.
Report?
Either my report, or under, I guess, the mailing matter. You know, I sent everybody an agenda for the G16 conference, and there is a Friday and Saturday.
This week?
Yeah, I will send it out again, because I figured you all might not remember it, but.
I remember, but I just can't go.
But it's, it's a not pleasant, but I'll send you the address, I think. But Jim is going to speak on Friday at 1:30, Jim was covering the active shooter presentation, so it should be a good, good opportunity to see what should be done in a situation like that. But here runs a game of public works, MS4, code enforcement, but I will send you another agenda and, you know, the address, but if you wanna go to dinner on Saturday, it is free, and the guest speaker, I'm not sure, last year they had the Lieutenant Governor spoke, now this year, they haven't announced who it's gonna be yet, so I'm not sure.
Mystery guest.
Pardon me?
Mystery guest.
Yeah, really. Shouldn't be at this point, but it still is, but anyway, if you wanna, it's free to council and their spouses, so I just need to note by tomorrow.
Are you attending?
I'm going to attend. I'm not sure if I can make the dinner, but I'll make everything else. 6 o'clock is, on Saturdays, it's getting a little bit tight for me, timelines, but if anybody wants to go, it's a good dinner, and maybe you can, you get to, you get the boroughs, Conneville, Derry, Dunmore, Mount Pleasant, you know, Irwin, Jeanette, lovely, you have the local boroughs are gonna be there, represented, you know, the representatives will be there, so it's, you know, it's easy to get pretty well attended, huh?
Yeah.
The price is right.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. I'd love to go, I just can't, I just can't.
Yeah, anybody that wants to go, please let me know, because we do.
Right.
They wanna make sure they have enough, you know, they remember to make sure then the meals are, you know, prepared, so.
Any other new business items? New business? Huh?
It wasn't really new business, but okay.
Any, okay, we're onto the open forum of citizens, as requested, if anyone in the audience has anything they wanna talk about, period. Anything on your mind? Getting sick, I think.
James Miller, 127 East 4000 of Latrobe. I'd like to talk a little bit about the new position of police chief of place.
position of police chief of police. I'm just wondering if the council would approve something in the order of, after they make their decision on possibly four or five candidates, before the vote, the candidates would come into the council meeting, and so that the, they could let the citizens know what their anticipations are, what they intend to do, and any questions that the city, or not the city, but the citizens have of them, and I think that it sets an important position that prior to voting, that this be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Okay. City manager's report, Wayne, do you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Stole your thunder, didn't we?
Yeah, that's all right. Sorry, Wayne.
I don't really have anything under the mayor's report tonight, so I'm feeling a little under the weather myself, I'm getting a sore throat, so, anyway, so, anybody else have anything they want on their minds, or want to be doing next? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels, second, please.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn.
The more I talk, the less worried I am.